I want to call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectment. It is Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. If you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Mr. Sanders. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and health
I would like to make a motion. I move to add an item to all business, item B, DPW propane tank replacement.
Second.
Second by my mic. Any discussion? Again, this is just added to the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You have a packet of, I'm sorry, minutes in your packet dated June 5th.
Motion approved, the matter stated June 5th.
Second.
Second.
Second by my mic. Discussion for discussion purposes on page five. Right one.
Section E.
Award the propane bid. It should read. I think that is correct. I think the only word that's wrong, we solicited six propane bids for the cleaning. It should be for the contract. The cleaning was in the last one. Yes. That references cleaning instead of propane in your contract. Sorry. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Present to speak. If you are in the room or online, we ask that you state your name for the record and let me your comments for two minutes. Just cancel.
My name is Alice Castles for Jared Foxborough. And I'm here to speak for the Wellington Congregation Ecclesiastical Society. We were chartered by the state over 200 years ago. We are part of the Federal Church of Wellington. And we meet once a year in the town hall. So from that meeting, which we had seven or eight members attend, there's only like nine of us. We noticed that the bell outside. The harness on the top, the wooden harness. I know this doesn't mean much to you people, but we're trying to watch out for that. There's a harness and it's decaying fast. If you could get a little can of water repellent, you know, something that could keep it from decaying would be wonderful. Or maybe a little foot on it like you do in the old days. They always had a little foot over the well. Or a little top over the well to keep it from getting meat on it so much. That's all we thought would be a nice thing to do. That's where we meet once a year, which is the historical building. And so that's the only suggestion we had. It's not an important issue at this meeting, but they asked me to come and convey that to you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm done. And I'll hand this in so that I have a correct name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else present to speak in the room?
In Tanaka 125 Mason Road, I came tonight to support the revision to increase the abatement for the firefighters. The volunteer firefighters. The amount that was originally stated in the original ordinance that they wouldn't spend more than, even with the increase. They will not approach that amount. That limit would not have to be raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Your talent.
Think tell 49 world. I just wanted to do a quick update. So last time I spoke, I mentioned that we were, the town was in violation of the chapter 14, section 1, Act 212. The town still has not taken action to correct it. So in that violation of the article, I was supposed to have a January 21st hearing and the town lawyer failed to be prepared to have representation for the town. And as, as expected, delayed that hearing. I also had reached out to Jeff Gordon's office and had a great talk again in regards to vote. It was under my impression that there may have been a statute out there preventing people to vote and then leave. He had his legal team look at that and said that there is no state statute saying that that cannot be done. I hope that the Board of Slight would take action and try to improve where more people in town can vote. Being that there is no statute saying that they can't vote really. But I understand that there may be some headaches in there, but I think the Board of Slight would should take action, increase voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online present to speak? I'll come back to the room. Anyone online? You should be able to unmute yourself, identify yourself for the record. Going once, going twice. Just that this.
Christine, this is our voters. On June 9th, the Secretary of State's office and the registrar of voters held a poll worker appreciation event. Secretary Thomas recognized three of our workers and honored them with certificates. Two of our workers have helped us out for 10 years and one for 20 years. So Suzanne and I would like to thank all of our poll workers again who have served Wellington for many, many years. And to paraphrase Secretary Thomas, she feels that poll workers are our unsung heroes.
Thank you. Any else in the room? One, twice. There'll be another present to speak at the end of the meeting. All right, correspondence. There is a list of correspondence in your packet. Any questions? They are all filed and can be muted. All right. Status report. I don't have anything new. The lots of project. Mike here in the room. I know we're still waiting. There was an onboard design meeting in Prague. Give us an update there.
Yeah, so we're at 90% plan. We have 90% plans prepared. We had an onboard design meeting in Prague because every step of the revision process, they are required to be provided the opportunity to review and comment. So now that we've gotten the plans to the point where they're more or less happy with them, we have to start the approach and the process of DOT. So we have started that kickoff, keep the process off with them there. And we'll get comments from them. We're hoping that process is fairly quick because they were required to have the opportunity to review when we initially submitted because it's first state road. So they've already gone through that and have done some of the work, like the work that was done that the state recently did in front of the church and the school. That was work that was originally on our plans that they agreed to implement and construct on the towns we have. So the plans align. So I'm hoping the process will be fairly quick, but that's where things start.
Thank you. School building committee. They have not met, but Mike, you're meeting tomorrow night at 6:30, correct? I anticipate there'll be, I know there'll be a discussion based on action that the Board of Education has taken. And from my perspective, we had a good hearty conversation as a joint body. And knowing that the original request came from the Board of Education. I believe their new recommendation will hold a lot of weight. So I look forward to seeing what SBC does moving forward.
Yes, the primary action tomorrow will be in result of the letter from the Board of Ed, which we received today.
And Jim, I'm not sure if you're aware, you were able to watch the Board of Ed meeting.
I watched the last one.
Yeah, so they're basically recommending a different course of action for their, for their board. And thus asking the SBC to consider wrapping up and completing the report. All right. ARPA has not met, but will hold a meeting next Monday, the 26th. Just waiting to make sure we can have a quorum. So we'll have an update from that. As far as staff, we will be moving forward, hopefully with interviews for public works. Administrative assistants and assistant land use agents on those positions. Jimmy Callahan, our new Parks and Rec director started today. So excited to see what he brings to the table with concerts in the park and summer camp beginning. He's got a lot on his plate right from the get go. So we're excited. All right, public works. Troy.
Roadside mowing still going on. We still have a big attraction at the park. We installed the new catch basin top of the bottom of the school field. We cleaned the shop, serviced the old 450. Last week, we went over to Hal's pond. We installed some loose sand there, the lifeguard dock, ropes, help of the fire department. We renovated the parking lot and stuff. And then today we picked up some trash, some debris, some of these projects on the property. Two holes of blocks, bricks, piers. It was a whole bunch of stuff. So that whole fencing.
We have a lot of other things on, on the agenda moving forward. So we'll hear from you after that.
I'm glad you did it. That was a big question.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But thank you for doing it.
The number of things they do because people were just, just don't think beyond themselves. It happens often. Picked up tires, trash, bedding, whatnot. So. But I do want to make a point, Troy, to talk about how they work collaboratively with the fire department as happens just about every year to prepare Hal's pond. And I really want to give kudos to both of those groups and Chris Kelly, the assistant Parks and Rec director. In the absence of a director, really working together to make sure the pond is ready for its opening next week. So thank you. All right, moving on to new business. We have a couple of appointments. The first one is more ceremonial than something that we absolutely have to do. Part of Robin Campbell's contract with the town was that within three years of hires, our town clerk would become certified. And I am very happy to report that despite Robin's thought and the rest of us knew she could do it. Robin actually completed all of her coursework and passed. Don't tell you what her mark was. But passed the Connecticut Certified Town Clerk Certification Course. And so with that, it gives me great pleasure to move to appoint Robin Campbell, CCTC, effective June 12, 2023, until the remainder of her term, August 31st, 2024. Second by Jim. All right, so this is a culmination of three years of hard work in that office. But Robin has been wanting, wanting, wanting to do this work for a long time and she put all of her effort into it. And so it does not go unnoticed. It doesn't change her term. This is merely clean up some contractual items in her certification. Comments?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Kelly wasn't an option as well.
No, because then would we be disappointing you tonight instead of appointing you? Temporal.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, the next item is appointing a representative to the Trinity Health EMS Advisory Board. So make sure I said Johnson Hospital has been purchased by Trinity Health. And then the development of the new paramedic program, they formed an advisory group of those members. They've decided to determine what their members are. And there's an EMS clinical coordinator chair who's named. And then a representative from one of the four towns, a fire service chief and EMS chief. Someone from Town County, MAA, and Trinity Health of New England EMS. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Tyler Millicks to be the Trinity Health EMS Advisory Board Representative, Wellington Board of Selectmen designate.
Second.
Second by Mike. Discussion. Mr. Millicks, anything you'd like to share with us?
No, we kind of found it. So we're excited. Under Trinity, it's a very robust company. They are going to be bringing a lot of assets up there, which you normally can publicly see if you're already aware of.
Right now, our paramedic service typically comes from either Wyndham or Rockville.
Yeah, Wyndham or Rockville. Yeah, so Wyndham will typically come out in your section of 3274. North of that is typically the Rockparamedic. But key to mind in Rockparamedic also is a single unit, which also covers the town of Vernon, Ellington, and Tullam, which combined maybe will probably be seven, eight thousand calls a year. So it's, it's, paramedics are getting more and more rare. So we'd be nice to be able to have, you know, people up there. It's certainly not like you sit on the campus or whatever before the house. So also you're getting your
Fantastic. Anything that provides a better response for ALS?
In the future, they have a couple of paramedics on, a couple of BLS trucks. So it's a good addition to the whole works and services region.
Thank you. I want to thank Tyler for his willingness to serve in this capacity.
Just one question. I assume we've already, you've already figured this out, but there is not an eligibility requirement problem that Tyler has to live in Wellington or anything like that?
No. There's a tax paramedic.
Yeah, I don't, I just didn't know. Like they didn't require the Board of Selectmen doesn't need to be a town resident, right?
No.
Okay, cool. I just, I just got one question. Are you, Tyler, are you still with the Wellington Fire Department?
I am.
Okay. You sent your email from the town neutral aid and it sounds wonderful. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Alex was right by cheating.
He might have gone a few other things with taking that title.
Keep the email, but you gotta take some stuff with it. So, all right. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Again, thank you for your willingness to serve Tyler. We will send a communication forward. All right, next item of business. Troy, you're up for a minute. Annual chip seal contract. In your packet, you have one quote from Gorman Group in the amount of $129,452.84. We had other requests that we had solicited and no responses. And Gorman has been our vendor for the last several years. No issues. And Troy is recommending with Gorman. And you can see the list of roads. When you say the village, it's all of the roads in behind the 32 there, between Hall's Pond and Penny Hill. Right. So you both have, and have to make a motion, but you both have suggested motions in your packet. So feel free to. I will move to award the 2324 chip seal contract to Gorman Group in the amount of $129,452.84.
Second.
Second by Jim. Troy, when do you anticipate this work being started?
Hopefully in the middle of.
About a month.
Yeah, I mean, weather permitting, there, if it rains every day, it keeps it fresh out.
You don't see any reason why they push us on. They're keeping up with.
It's a smaller.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Next item is the annual crack seal contract. You will see in your packet this Connecticut seal coating in the amount of $33,996. And Gorman Group in the amount of $18,700. And Troy is recommending we go with Gorman. Troy, can you tell us the biggest difference between these two products? It's one in its own stomach.
It's, I kind of reached out to Gorman because when I came in, it was a big difference. And he did, they do it by the gallon, not by the pound. So he still says it's still the same job. It's going to do everything. So I was like, you're kind of a little bit, there is a difference there. And he's like, oh, so Connecticut seal coating doesn't matter how many, they do by the gallon. How they break the gallon down to the pounds, he explained all of it. But they said that they would do it the same. Current man?
Their current vendor. Did not.
The previous vendor did bid.
Certainly there have been some any change, concerns.
I'm fine with that because if they were one of the bidders, I was going to bring up some concerns I had with the previous contractor.
Yeah. All right, so I will make a motion, move to award the 2324 crack seal contract to, I want to make sure I get this right, Gorman Group in the amount of $18,700.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I didn't say aye.
No, I thought you did. Okay, now the motion carries. All right, next item, award the catch basin cleaning contract. I'm hearing. In your packet, you have bids from two vendors. Clean Harbors and Crop Environmental. Crop Environmental is at $1,900 per day and Clean Harbors is $29.50 per day. I see Troy, and Troy is recommending Crop Environmental. And they're our current vendor. They just finished up some work within this budget year, correct? Okay. Can I just ask a question? In the Clean Harbors, did they have an estimated recovery fee? Which actually brings their estimated total with fees a little higher than $29.50.
Fuel charge.
Crop does not charge a fuel charge? Okay.
Troy, just a question on the, you know, we've had a lot of discussions in more finance and other things about not using or using very little sand these days. That's obviously reduced the amount that they're pulling out of the catch basins by a lot. Are we seeing any help from that? Or are the prices just climb every year like you would expect prices to climb every year?
I think the prices are just climbing. Yeah, they're, they're doing more a day than what they were before. So I mean.
Because there's less to suck out.
There's less to suck out. So they're basically, they can get it between two and three weeks, per state, you know, from the hospital and half the four. So.
Okay, so we're saving on the total number of days.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. And there are certain spots. I mean, we do have catch basins on their roads. You know, so maybe there is, exactly. So there's some, I was working on this year. And they, you know, there is a bit, they are sucking out in certain spots that would be expected. You still have your leaves and all your debris that goes down into the basins. But there is not as much sand as you would have in previous years.
Thank you. And we had, just for our station purposes, we had, Troy had asked for additional funds in the 2324 budget. And we cut that back in anticipation of much to this night going to half per year. So is it possible, from what I'm hearing, it's possible they may be able to do more than that in a year? And just depending on how much is in there. Okay. All right, so I will make, let someone else make a motion.
I move to award the fiscal year 2324 catch basin. Can I reword that? That's not correct. I move to award the fiscal year 24 catch basin cleaning contract.
We use 2324 here.
But it's not a fiscal, fiscal year 24. All right, I'm being too picky. I'm sorry. I'll start over.
We start over.
I move to award the 2023, 2024 catch basin cleaning contract to Crop K R O P P Environmental Contractors in the amount of $1,900 per day.
There a second? I'll second. Discussion purposes. Any discussion?
Yeah, do you know roughly what that's going to cost? I mean, $19 a day, but.
Well, we know what our budget is. I don't have the budget number, but Troy has. Yeah, and then what we did this year is when we, we had exceeded the budget, but Troy had some additional dollars within his budget. Was able to transfer money between departments to get some catch basins cleaned. Those are some of the things we talked about this evening. Within the budget this year. So that may not happen next year. So we may be at the point where, you know, the year comes and we're able to do half of them. But again, if we have a good year and not a lot of debris, not just from winter time, but between storms, et cetera, we may
I've never seen a motion like this with like it's like you know, per day, you would want to just up to the maximum butt line item or something like that.
So that's the, that's the it's based on their bid and their bid was per day, not a total amount. So we know what our total to spend is. But this was the con, how they bid about it, $1,900 per day. So that's the way we award it. Based on that.
Yeah, that occurred to me as I was saying it out loud and that occurred to me. But because the, the motion is to award the contract. And I guess that's correct.
Right.
With the understanding on the board that we're not going to outspend our budget.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right. Item B, street sweeper. As a CIP item, we actually have nothing to discuss on this. Troy had found the street sweeper. We wanted to bring it to you because again, it not being a new item, these things move quickly. So much so that the proposed seller did not want to wait for our municipal process. So back to the drawing board.
It was a surprise.
Yeah. All right, so with that, we'll move to item F, award vendor for DPW paving project of Polster Road. You recall, we discussed some of the savings within our budget this year, putting towards a paving project combined with some dollars for next year to capitalize on those funds. The Polster Road paving is one of the roads that was identified by Beta, identified by Troy and his plan to us. And so what you have before you are three bids to reclaim grade and pay Polster Road. How far is that?
It's basically, so they're going to stop, start where the neutral stop and they're going to go just to the bridge. And they're actually going to go all the way to the center.
So you have Connecticut seal coating came in at $195,750. Pastria, Charles Pastria came in at $224,250. And all state asphalt at $197,559 and five cents. Five cents. And Troy is recommending we use Connecticut seal coating.
You used them before.
I mean, they're on the state approved vendor list. They've been in business for quite some time. We have not personally used ones.
Okay.
I have spoken with some other towns that have used them and they were happy with their service.
But in the quote you have in front of you, you can see Troy got quotes on Kohler Road and Pine Crest Road. So there's a proposed total at the bottom here strictly working on the Polster Road.
Right.
So just to give you some idea of the other roads he had on that.
And what is the, where is the budget for this again? What is the budget for this?
So there's going to be roughly $115,000 this year and $80,750 of extra. Well, yeah, this.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all out of operating?
Yes.
Okay. I move to award the Polster Road paving contract to Connecticut Seal Coating in the amount of $195,750.
Second.
By Jim, any discussion?
Yes.
Mike.
You said it's to the bridge. I thought the bridge was the town line.
No, it goes up, up there.
You're past the bridge. Three houses past the bridge that are still.
Yeah, there's a few houses that are willing to pass the bridge.
But they're on the other side of the river. They're over the river, but they're in Wellington. Okay, I always thought that the river was the town line there.
Well, you think of it as that other river.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have plans to the remaining portion? So it'll remain on the major rehab list until we do the rest of it?
To redo the whole, like you were looking at around $600,000 to do the town line.
That section.
That section was redone. A long, like thirty years ago, that was redone, from the bridge. Oh, I just assumed Stafford did it, because I thought it was in Stafford.
Yeah, it's not too bad, I mean, there's some cracks and stuff like that, but you probably can get rid of, you know, some pavements on it, it's from the bridge to where the new truck stop is washed out there when you have those.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, where I almost didn't get out of it from the hailier extension.
Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, the next item is awarding a vendor change for the Willington Hill Fire Department First Response Vehicle. I don't have much information for you on this, and I didn't know Chief Snyder wouldn't be here. Did he share anything with you?
I have, I have some.
Yeah, let me share with you a little bit about what this is, and so it's, I have some concerns. And mainly because we approve a vendor, and our plan is to go out to bid on a lease on a vendor. And so, at some point, the vendor was changed without approval here, so, you know, we're ready to go out with a lease, but now we have to go back to choose a new vendor, I have no specs to share with you, I don't have any information for us to award this bid on, other than information presented to Donna, so.
So, so first of all, the comment you just made is exactly why you're here, we're changing vendor without permission here, we're getting the permission, right?
But I have nothing except for Donna, an email from Donna saying the new vendor is McGovern.
Yes.
You know, but we've seen nothing. So, again, the information should come to us.
So, I will tell you what the chief told me, and what I know of the case, what I know of the situation, because I helped him with his work schedule, I helped him communicate with Donna some. The vendor that was previously chosen, that we had gotten through conversation with, oh, Tyler's gone.
Yeah.
We got through conversation with Tyler. Sold the vehicle that we had already, we had already made, the town of Wellington had made a commitment to the dealer. And they sold the vehicle to somebody else. The salesman came in on Monday and said, where is it, it's gone, and someone else at the dealership sold it out from under. So the vehicle was gone, so then, Chief Snyder's been leaning on the dealer for months now, when's the next one, when's the next one, in the meantime, trying to get the finance process set up. And then they said, well, we think there's gonna be another one built in August, but we can't give you a bid or a commitment that it's coming. In the meantime, I think also through Tyler, he found another dealership, and they had them in stock. And so he and Bobby Knight drove to that dealership to make sure it was actually there. And they had a parking lot full of these special package SUVs, it's identical. It's a special service vehicle, it's not a fancy vehicle, it's the identical vehicle to the one that was spec previously, it's the exact same spec. But of course, there's been a price increase, but it stayed within the budget still. And so, and then he said to the vendor, while I can't go to you unless you're on a purchasing, we have to go back to bidding again. And the vendor produced the documentation that they are on a bidding, on a state bid type bidding, buying consortium, that's what I'm looking for. And so, that was why he put that information together and sent it to Donna.
So they're out of Massachusetts, they're not out of Connecticut.
Correct. Right, and they're a municipal vehicle supplier, and they have a parking lot full of these vehicles, so they will, the moment there's a commitment from Wellington, they give us a bid number for the vehicle, it's on the lot, it's ours. It is assigned to the town of Wellington.
And I think what's important, those are the final commitments, is really one to be secured in the leasing.
Right.
That's, you know, why a lot of these people don't stick it out, especially in this day and age.
Right.
So I do wish we had, if you had a spec sheet, I do wish we had that, to be able to take a look at and have, and an optimal request that from Chief Snyder, so that we have that for records done, it's gonna be that for.
I had assumed he had emailed it to her.
Information. Yeah, but she's been, she's pretty good about forwarding everything else to us, so.
And you said, might be a team budget.
It's still in the allocation, yeah, it's right at the top of the budget now, in the conversation that he asked me to tell Donna was that we would not, we meaning the fire department. That the fire department would not go over. If some small, because the price increases, they haven't gotten that price increase yet from the equipment, they're waiting, it was supposed to be a June one price increase on the equipment. Which was why for the last few months, he's been asking to get the financing ready, so that we could move before the price increase. But that didn't happen because of other things that Donna needed to do. And so, in the meantime, that vehicle went away, the lower price was going away, and now we're at this vehicle, so he will not go past the allocation, leave them out, and if they, when the price increase comes in, if they come, I'm sure they'll have to find other money to fill in the rest of the cost or cut a foot out of the vehicle, but they won't go over.
And, I don't know. They'll share the risk, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So it's about a thirty-eight hundred dollar price difference.
On the vehicle itself, right, and we don't know what the price increase is gonna be on the equipment, that was supposed to be a June one price increase, but the vendor has not yet.
But we're staying at seventy-five thousand.
But we're staying at seventy-five thousand regardless.
Okay, so I will move to change the vendor for the Willington Hill Fire Department First Response Vehicle to McGovern Municipal Headquarters, in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Second of my mind, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, Wellington number one, we're getting there. Okay. So, we're all familiar with the mold remediation project, they've secured funds at Ford of Finance. The next step is to, for our purchasing ordinance, to have a contract approved at Ford Selectment, and so, I have the very specific contracts, if you like them, you have the email from Chief Moore, we have two vendors, Service Master by Mason out of Rhode Island for thirty-two thousand sixty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. That includes tearing out drywall, cleaning the sun walls, tearing out bag and insulation, cleaning the floor or roof joint system, and applying antimicrobial agent. The second is from Ser Pro Bloomfield, the cost is twenty-five thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars twenty-three cents. That includes removing base molding, tearing up carpeting, tearing up laminate flooring, tearing up the drywall, tearing up insulation, cleaning the floor or roof joint system, cleaning the wall studs and applying antimicrobial to more than walls and ceilings. So the recommendation from the fire department is to move forward with the Ser Pro of Bloomfield. So, Chief Moore, it looks like, and again, I have the very specific documents, if you all would like to look at them, I see it's printing out fourteen page documents, it looks like that one is a little more all encompassing. For a lesson.
They're trying to get more work in the area. Super kind of Steven, who's the woman actually, told us to contact them, they did a lot of work at Center School last year, they were fantastic, so. Working with them up to this point, here. On paper, they really have been good. So it's, it's great.
I think it's really important that people forward this work, so we can get that, you know, some estimates on where we'll stand to make the firehouse usable after this, this is just step one, so I'm gonna move to award the Willington Fire Department number one mold remediation contract to Ser Pro of Bloomfield in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second, third.
You pick, whoever here first. And those are the others, just in case you're interested, alright, any discussion?
I was glad to see the better price, and it's quite a savings, because no doubt there's more to come.
Yeah, there's still, I mean, outside of this, there's still probably work that is gonna be done, but that's under the purchasing requirements. That actually will start tomorrow, if somebody's not taking care of it, how they're the electrical, we're actually okay with, we'll, uh, escape system, which always helps, we will get that up to, go to Fire Department, or Willington Hill Fire Department. So that's back up and running, and then somebody will test it and service it, so that's at least taken care of. So there will be some you know, a little bit more cost to it, I think it was thirty-seven thousand before I asked for it, and then you move forward.
And this was money out of does not require a town meeting, that's all I remember, is this once they do this, they can move forward with this.
It was project.
I think so. Alright, any further discussion?
It just, it just looks like Ser Pro, or thought it's the quote also, so.
The lower number.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, item I is a C I P item, and this is Willington one hydraulic rescue equipment, is this first tool? Okay, and so this, once this vendor's chosen, this item will need to go to a town meeting. And they don't know when that will happen, so, I'll get real quickly, we got the street sweeper at the same time, we can do it together. Alright, so you have in front of you a quote from Firematic Supply Company for fifty-three thousand eighty-six dollars. This is a, this is a budget sixty thousand dollars, so.
Of the cost will be modified with trouble.
Okay, so you anticipate using?
Yes.
The fifty-eight thousand?
This is up to the sixty thousand.
Oh, sorry, sixty thousand.
Yes, we have to do some markings.
Okay. Alright, so I will move to award the Willington Fire Department number one hydraulic rescue equipment purchase to Firematic in the amount of fifty-three thousand eighty-six dollars. Second of my Jim, any discussion?
Not that anyone asked, but people may be curious about three bids on this one, there's no such thing, because this is a this is a dedicated type of equipment, and you only get one sales rep for an area who can sell it. And this is actually, we, you could bid for different brands, but it has been a desire of the town administration and the efficiency committee for years to make sure both departments were buying compatible equipment. And this will be the first time since nineteen seventy-six, when the first tool was purchased, that they're both the same brand and the same series. Since nineteen seventy-six. What's that?
We've always put a different series or different version.
Right, even when the brand was the same, when you bought, when someone bought new, the other model wasn't available anymore, so you had to buy the newer model, and they weren't compatible. So this is the first time they'll be leveled out.
Oh, we're getting there, folks, we're getting there.
That way, if something doesn't work or breaks, you can, you can always borrow from the other.
The training, the training is identical, the equipment, the battery from one fits on the other, these are all battery powered.
Yeah, with a large volunteer base, being able to read things. Alright, so you know the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, you're welcome, I'll keep you posted on any town needed. Brings us to item J, discussion in the change of town office building hours. Shared with you a letter and some information from town staff. So they have been working on a potential proposal they're gonna bring to us. They sent us a communication, asking the board to consider moving from a five day work week to a four day work week. Their proposal was close the town office building on Fridays, and either change or expand the hours Monday through Thursday. Moving from twenty-seven public hours to thirty-four public hours. This would, in their estimations, allow for more friendly hours for our residents. Be an additional benefit to staff, allowing for greater employee retention and morale, it would also allow staff time for personal obligations, leading to less time off. Again, these are some of their key points. This has been discussed by Board of Selectmen in the past, not this current board, and at that time, the driving factor was cost to the town. I believe the current proposal before us would be cost neutral, if it only affected the town office building hours. And we could possibly see a small decrease in heat and/or electricity, but I believe the amount would be so. With that, there are some staff representatives in the room, both union, non-union, salaried, unsalaried, elected. I think what I loved about this proposal was their, their willingness to work together and come together with one solid idea. They, there was a staff meeting, I will tell you that not all of the staff is in favor, but the majority is, and I think that's what's important here, so, any of you want to speak to this? Are you the representative of the group, Karen? Nicole?
Nicole and I. We just feel like it would be a better work-life balance, and the major thing to consider here is the fact that our current hours were only open twenty-seven hours. When these hours were created, they worked, because most of the time, mom was home with the kids and could do those errands that needed to be done between nine and two. Today, that doesn't really work for the people, because people have to be to work by nine o'clock. We're opening at nine, they're already at work, so they can't get any of their stuff done at the town hall, because we're not open. And when they get out of work, we're closed, we close at two o'clock. The only night they have available is Monday night. It's the beginning of the week, not everybody's available on Monday night, so, we just felt like if we were able to add more hours to the day, for the town, it would be more convenient for them. There's a lot of surrounding towns that have taken on this four day work week, and it's working for them. We spoke with someone from Tolland, and they started that in two thousand nine, and they said they've had some great success. So, we're just trying to see what works best for the town, which I think adding seven more hours to our open hours to the public is, is really key.
So just a question, I apologize that I didn't, I missed it and didn't read it in advance, so how is it, explain how the hours that the public has access changes, even though your work hours are the same?
So.
The amount of hours.
So we have twenty-seven public hours currently.
Right.
We have staff that work anywhere from, in the town office building, from eighteen hours to thirty-five hours.
So they work hours that the, that were close to the public.
Yeah, for example, Karen is in the selectmen's office from eight-thirty, Monday is twelve-thirty to seven-thirty. But the rest of the week, she's here eight-thirty to four. And we're only open nine to two, so she has time before, we're open to the public and time after, so that would change her staff. Those that work thirty-five hours a week would need to work an hour outside of the open public hours, as opposed to now, you know, working eight of those, and so there would be a reduction, there would also be a time twenty, we have a twenty-four hour, twenty-five hour a week, would be working less than the thirty-four hours, so there'd be adjustments within each department. So some of the research that I began doing when this proposal first started making its way around the building was to look at some of our surrounding towns and see how they handle that, and department by department, they make those adjustments within their department, and it's manageable. The discussions of the staff, I believe, were to include all staff, correct? Including public works, they do have some pause to public works. And mainly because that would be an entire day, I think, of the winter season, but I think there's some things we could do around that, so maybe instead of summer hours, they have winter hours. Right now, they have summer hours where they work four ten-hour days, and that's from like second weekend May to second week of September. I think we could be creative with that and possibly extend that, so it's no longer summer hours, but that's normal, and make up winter hours, where they're here five days a week. Because otherwise, we're paying overtime anytime there is a winter event. And so when I looked at many of the towns that went to four days a week, either their public works stayed five days a week, or their public work was four days, public works was four days a week, but they had multiple groups. We do not have multiple groups. So I think there's some things that have to be worked out, we'd have to work something out with the unions, because there would have to be some adjustments there, but I think it's definitely something to take a look at, Ashford, Mansfield, Collin, Stafford. Bolton does not, they are off four days a week. Vernon Ellington.
So, so in we could increase the public hours just by changing the public hours.
Correct.
So, the advantage that this brings us, I think we should look at multiple, separate issues here. If the, if the goal is, or the sales pitch is, this gives the public more hours, we can just do that. We can change the hours of the town office building and have the hours that people are working in here, but the door's locked, the door could be unlocked. So we could add public hours.
You are correct.
So, I very much agree with the whole thing about work-life balance and retention. I think it's a very valuable idea for the employees. I don't want to completely use the sales pitch of increased hours for the townspeople, when we could do that anyway. You know, it is, we don't need one to do the other.
Correct.
But if it lengthens the hours in the day, then they're starting to get to be an advantage there, because now your hours can be a greater time of the day, maybe later in the afternoon or whatever. So I think that part of it is an advantage. My only concern, I think it's a great idea, but my only concern is that there are certain offices here that I'm assuming get Friday business or get any day of the week business, like if someone suddenly needs to go to the town clerk for something, very official, and the town clerk isn't open on a regular day of the week, that's a little bit of a thing. Or if someone needs to go to do a building permit or something like that. Although building permits now can be applied for online. So there's, that's the only thing I worry about, on public feedback about this is, oh, now there's a day I can't even go to the town office building.
But if you look at the surrounding towns, they've done it. They're successful. People know, hey, they're not open on Friday, I gotta go Monday through Thursday.
Right.
So to me, that's an advantage. When I first started, I remember sitting over there, and the two of you over here said, when Chris Roberts was leaving, you said, did he just get all his certifications? Yes. And you said, I feel like we've become a training ground. Yes, we have. We've become a training ground, because there's better opportunities out there, and if we want to keep people, we have to give them something. We have to take that carrot and wave it in front of their face, like, hey, we can offer you four days a week. We might not be able to let you work home virtually, because that's not how this is set up, because it's a town, and you have to be here and be available for the residents, but we could offer you an extra day off. That's a benefit to you. So now, somebody's going to think twice about, well, do I really want to go get another job? Because then I'm going to have to work five days a week, and I'm really loving working four days a week, because I have more of a balance. I have that extra day to run around, do doctor appointments, and get rid of those things, and then have my weekends free.
Yeah, I'd like it in my job, trust me. I think, I think it's a great idea for all those reasons.
I think when we're competing with the private sector, we're competing salary-wise, we know we're never going to match those salaries. We don't have sign-on bonuses, which, you know, people have choices now. And so this is one more piece, we don't have work-from-home model, it just doesn't exist here, because of the nature of our work. So it's one more piece to say, here, come work in the town of Willington. And now it's competing with other municipalities, because you can say, hey, here's one more, one last thing about working in Willington, I can work for all these other towns, let's take the salary off the table. And I can go work there, and they're going to, I only have to work four days a week. So there is a benefit to our staff, I'm going to make no mistake about that. But the public hours is huge. What I liked is that the first thing that the staff took on when they made the suggestion was how can we make this better for our taxpayer and our end user? And that was their main driving force. And while we're discussing what works best for them, I want to tell you that when they, when I sat in that staffing interview, they repeated that multiple times, that this will be a benefit to, although we're only open four days a week, that there would be a benefit to the extended hours. And so I think there is some validity in that. Again, I would love to sit here and say, here's one more reason we're going to do this, because we're going to save all this money. I just don't think that's going to happen. So if it, if we do, great, I would like us to consider it. We've got a lot of things that would have to be ironed out. These are just a proposed dates that, again, came from the staff. We can look at some other suggestions. And if we do it, I'd like to do it on a trial basis.
Right, I think that would be important, is the agreement with all the bargaining units and all of that, as we're testing. I have worked in work environments where we did that before, where we, and we made an agreement with the union. This is not the new guaranteed schedule, because what if we find it doesn't work?
Right.
The other, the other thing is, I've worked in organizations that had four-day work weeks, but covered all five days by splitting people up. And that way, it was open, because that organization felt that they needed to have availability to their customers, if you will, five days a week. And so some people work Monday through Thursday, and some people work Tuesday through Friday. And that way, they all got four-day work weeks, but the five days were covered.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's an option. Some of our departments are pretty small here.
They are.
So covering, having two crews is not easy.
And we've had short-term crunches with various problems, where people put in long hours. I remember the tax office and, and other offices where you had to, like, get over a situation, or.
Yeah, I've sat here all night stuffing envelopes for technicals.
Yeah.
Yeah. Myself.
You may need to do that again. Is the person that's labeled I, only raised her hand a couple of times, is that one of your representatives?
That.
Yeah, so maybe, well, let's just see who it is, because I know that everybody can be here. Do they have the ability underneath, do you put down some of their?
They're unmuted now.
Can you hear me? Okay, now I can't hear you.
Can you just identify yourself?
Colleen Quinn. Can you hear me?
Colleen Pack, is that what you said?
Colleen Quinn.
All right, okay, we're going to mute you, this is, there'll be a president to speak at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I just know that everybody could be, I thought maybe it was a staff member. All right, so, you know, I guess what I'm looking for from, from you all, is this something you would like to see us pursue in?
I think it should definitely be discussed anymore.
Okay.
I think it has a lot of attention.
Yeah, and I like that, we kind of muddled the hours of open versus hours work.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Just got it.
It's pretty close, there's only a couple. What was important to me was that they bring forward consistent hours for the public. If we're going to make a change, there's going to be growing pains, there's no way around that. People, we have it now, people come to the door, you know, Nicole and Janice, Robyn and Rachel, they can tell you, they see them from their direct windows, and will walk up at two-fifteen. And you see them look frustrated, because they came after two o'clock and were done. So even with our hours that have been the same for years, people still don't know what they are. So we're going to see, I'm sorry. You're going to see, you know, some people who aren't going to be able to come in and do business. But I think once, once our hours are understood by people, we do a lot of information sharing in that capacity, they'll know what the new hours are, and know they couldn't do business. Part of this also includes the finance office, which works with the board of education. So I started preliminary conversations with the board of ed. They would also include conversations with the library and the fire departments who utilize those services. And again, I think if we're consistent, and they know what the expectation is, and when they could do business for an office that maybe is slightly different in hours, those are all things that we could work out, the nuts and bolts. But we didn't get to thirty-five hours, because that was either extending one day over ten hours, or like two days, one, at least one other day in there that was already different. We already have a Monday that's different. So leaving some consistency to time, so people would know. If we, let's say we were going to the schedule, every day they open at eight, Monday through Thursday, every day, I have eight o'clock, they're going to be open. And then with the exception of our late night, the rest of them, they close at a certain time. So that's why there's that extra hour for those thirty-five hour-a-week employees, and that's easy enough to make up either before eight or after. And being able to be flexible, those, which is what we do now, there's some flexibility to that schedule.
So just curious, I don't know who wants to answer this, but how is lunch handled right now? I assume people go off, clock for lunch, or?
We get to be at our desk, we work through our lunch.
Only public works have a paid lunch, the rest, we're saving, they.
So you're, so you're, if, if, if you're a person who works thirty-five hours, that's thirty-five hours without a lunch break?
We eat at our desk.
Right, but you're working. So when someone comes to the counter, you're there?
Yep.
All right, well, that's.
We put our food down, and we go help who needs help.
I mean, that's bogus. I mean.
Listen, when I got here, I thought, this is kind of our.
I mean, I hate to ask the question, but that's not legal, is it?
It is.
How is that legal?
It's a paid lunch. It's paid lunch. If it were unpaid, it would be different. Correct.
So I work, we don't get paid, we have an hour off unpaid.
Public work.
And we sit at our desks, and we have to work, because people come to the counter.
Yeah.
And we don't get paid for it.
So public works, and it is spelled out specifically for public works within the CBA, that they have specific time for a break and a lunch. And so there's this off-the-clock, so they work eight and a half hours, or ten and a half hours, and they have a half an hour unpaid. These folks will work seven or eight hours, most of them are seven hours, as typical max now. And they have lunch at their desk. But listen, they, they get up in there, allow breaks. I encourage it. I think before that, same way. Get up and take a walk around. If you, if you come through here at any given time, you see someone outside walking around, they're probably taking a break from their, sitting at their desk. Many times, we are working together while we're watching each other eat lunch. So, and I, Nicole and I often arrive at each other's office, but at one time, we just don't.
Food in hand, or something.
Yeah, I mean, no, he arrives and I'm eating, no, as soon as I eat it out, same way. What I'll do is, if you all wanted to shoot some suggestions to me individually, that you have a work of putting it together, and start some preliminary discussions on what some of those potential union adjustments would be to look like. And what I really want you to get some thought to, is the difference between town office building and public works. Again, when I tell you the majority of the staff was included in thinking this was a good thing that included public works, and if we're not going to do that all year round, we want to be able to have, you know, a real conversation with them about why that wouldn't be beneficial to everyone. So I think there could be a compromise there, and maybe shift in thought between summer hours to lunch hours. So, and they have had that for, I don't know how long now. Yeah, they have their summer hours, and they've had them for at least fourteen years. But beyond that, I can tell you for sure, those. So shoot me off some of your concerns, and we'll start compiling some information, and we'll start this conversation.
The public works thing is a new record, because we went through the whole discussion of, you know, you're in a job, you want, you want to keep going with the job, and then that's why they have that rolling hour, half hour for lunch, or something like that.
Well, that's so that they make sure they get a break, right? Unlike the rest of us, they're not working, you know, you're in the middle of painting, they're not eating at the same time. So, want to make sure.
Obviously.
Yeah. So, all right.
But that's, that's what our thought is, extending it to the entire town.
No, that's the proposal that came to us from the staff. So now we're tasked with having to make the hard decisions about what does and doesn't stay in the proposal they gave us.
You get to make it happen.
So we, we can make everybody happy here, some people happy, and.
The scope is the town office building?
Well, that's, listen, the hours that are changing are the public hours of the town office building. What we change is. Correct. And so in, in a lot of the towns that I've researched since this came up, their public works department has its own contract. So they made changes within contracts and labor groups. We have one labor group. One unionized labor group. And so already, the contract is very different. They have summer hours, the town office building never has. Next question was, why didn't we consider this before? Because we treat them separately, even though they're in the same bargaining unit. So I think there's some discussion to be had, work to be done, and, and see how we can work to provide the adequate service and make the most people appreciative of the choices. This is where we have to do the hard.
Speaking of appreciative, I think the town office building staff should be appreciating someone who's nodding off or working, yes, period. Who's over here helping to lead the charge for change. That takes a little bit of guts.
They, they all, I want, they worked very hard on this. We all did, and this was led by them, this wasn't, this didn't start in my office. So they rallied together, and again, it didn't matter whether they're union, non-union, elected, appointed, full-time, part-time, they made sure everybody had a voice in the process. So I love the collaboration, whatever, now. All right, we will put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and hope to have more hearty discussion. The bringing in. All right, the next item is firefighter abatement ordinance. We had discussed several meetings ago, the proposed increase to the abatement, which is to go from two thousand, one thousand dollars to two thousand dollars. I didn't hear back from Chief Snyder, but Alex, I understand that you and he spoke, because I had said I wanted to hear from both departments.
Yep, so we actually did a long discussion about it, and we're services commissioned. Both departments are in favor going up to the two thousand. Leave the requirements who are less as they originally are, as what they are in the original. Unfortunately, I don't have.
Okay. That's my biggest concern, because there were some, some original drafted suggestions from Chief Snyder that actually decreased some of the items, and I thought.
I think those were less the way, I think they were the way they are in the original. The changes were the twenty-five-year members getting to the twenty-five years, that is all your still meetings and stuff like that. Currently, it says that you have to be, I think, a board member to get those. People who've been in the service for over twenty-five years typically are fifteen, sixteen years old, they're less active in coming to calls, but they still provide a lot of years of service to the town, a lot of years of service to all departments. The hope is to keep them on, as some are, just to get back.
But still active, and so.
Right, it's not like we're saying, you know, twenty-five years, you can never go. We don't, you know, you'll get it if you never walk into a fire system, it's something to be active.
One of the other items that's in the current agreement, and I had concern about this, came in the new draft, was that we remove the caveat regarding being up to date on taxes. Can you all talk about that?
So we discussed it in emergency services commission. That's, in my opinion, that's not for us to say.
You didn't have any more input, because the draft that was given to me included that. Okay, so if you're saying it goes back, except for the amount to the other, to the original, leave that in, which would mean you have to be current in the last two years.
Mike, you're.
I'm reading it right now. It's on my little phone screen, but I'm reading it.
One of the things that we had a conversation with Chief Snyder and I spoke was, you forward to approve, you like, it's going to be during.
Yeah, and so it's an ordinance.
Yeah.
So it would have to go back for legal review. It also has to go back to town meeting.
Absolutely.
So it will, all of those things will absolutely happen. We have to have a solid draft that we agree upon before we send it for a thorough review at that point. But that's one of the things I, you know, certainly had some concern. It's an incentive to get folks to participate, but I think not, I think waiving the up-to-date portion of your taxes, and we're essentially using our own money to pay ourselves back.
Peter, you remember, I, I don't, I remember the discussion, I don't remember the outcome of the discussion.
That was, that was my biggest concern, actually, just.
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with the increase of proposing that to taxpayers. It is, you know, it's a name that was moved forward on a statewide basis, and updating our. Okay. So you all have a, a current draft that you, it only changes the amount?
It was emailed to you at five oh eight this afternoon, that's the email I'm reading. So I'm just trying to work through the small lines.
So I'll take a look at it, and we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
I'd like to at least look at that.
Yeah. Not going to lie, I attempted to not eat dinner at my desk after.
Well, we can't approve it, we can't approve it anyway.
No, no, no.
So both departments are in favor.
In favor, but okay.
Some of the younger members, the juniors, don't really take advantage of it, but pull, or try to attract some other.
So what I, I'll ask, in the past, only one department has taken advantage of it. Your department came on last year, so I believe that this year will be the first time they've had anyone, and it was select members. Do you anticipate opening it up to try to, as in a retention tool?
So what we don't want is to have any crossover of pay tiers, where you have that call line, you do it. If you're a board member that qualifies to the language, that has one part of it. So if you're a, you're responding to, we didn't want you to call live for us, because it was too hard for. We don't want somebody to think they're double-dipping.
But if they're a board member and they're a paid member, it's a similar double dip, right? Do you have any of those?
I don't have a list.
Okay.
I can comment on how it was worded, and I haven't made it through the whole thing to see if it's still that way, but how it was. I can comment on how it was worded and I haven't made it through the whole thing to see if it's still that way, but how it was worded was if you were participating in a paid manner, you are not eligible to get the.
Abatement.
Tax abatement because you're already getting a salary.
Okay, so not as a board member anything. And I think that's fair.
Right.
So with that, would you open it up for more of your members? Cause your department had taken a stand to not offer it. Um, and then.
So for true volunteers, um, that made the ten percent, I think that, uh, I care, who's that, Mike, number four or?
Yeah, I'm trying to read through and make sure they're reading the current version.
I don't even, I don't even have a phone in front of me.
But I think it's, you know, as long as we can meet requirements, yes.
Okay. Alright, so we'll make sure that, um, I'll, I'll make sure that's shared with, uh, the both of you. You have it in a, did you go to all three of them?
I think so. I'm afraid to close the attachment right now, so.
We'll make sure you both have it and put it on the agenda at our next meeting so that we can move forward and, um, potentially have this on, uh, the, the next town meeting, um, for possible. Um, and either of you has, um, some concerns you want addressed. If you can send those communications to Karen so we can get the questions answered. Um, at our next meeting, we can iron out some things and I'll have a draft to you, um, um, an amended ordinance. That brings us to item B, which is propane tank replacements at DPW. Alright, I'm gonna give you a sheet. And Jim, this may sound familiar to you. Mike, somewhat new to you. In October, the board discussed replacing the propane tank at DPW and the Dog Pound. We completed the Dog Pound project but put out the DPW project due to cost. And we could not be lower price option. We could not use because they were not our propane vendor. So we had a really, uh, nice number. We own the tanks.
I remember talking about this at Board of Finance.
Yeah, but they couldn't do it. So, um, we did go out to bid again. Our vendor did not change. But the current DPW budget will allow to absorb this cost. Um, as opposed to what we, um, had discussed doing, which was including in bid and it would have been a new, um, cost in next year's operating budget. So Troy has the funds within his budget. So our current, and, and again, you only see one bid in front of you because our propane supplier is the only person who can do this work. So you have a bid for a five hundred gallon tank and a thousand gallon tank. Um, five hundred gallons at fifty-four ninety and eighty-nine ninety for the thousand. Um, any propane we have in there will be transferred from the current tank to the old tank. This tank cannot be serviced. They will not put any more fuel on this one, so we need a replacement. Whether we do it now or do it later. Um, and I, it's really important that we move forward this project, um, as we prepare for the new generator that's gonna go into DPW. Um, and making sure that it can adequately serve as that. So with that, before we have more discussion, I will move to award a DPW propane tank replacement project to high-grade gas service in the amount of eighty-nine, eight thousand nine hundred ninety dollars.
Second.
Second, no discussion.
And that brings us all, the entire town under one propane supplier.
We've been under one propane supplier. But in order to get the new tank, we have to use, and we are in a contract, only the person with our contract, no one else would touch it. So.
It brings all the equipment that we say.
Yeah, yeah. And the good news is we still have the tank, so we changed suppliers. We have to do this down the road. Whomever that supplier is at the time, um, can do the work. So I think that's beneficial. Um, and being able to do it within the box now and not having, um, to, you know, go back to the town and ask for more funds, we were able to do what the dog found in this with current budget difficulties.
Troy, the, um, I assume the contractor's gonna pull the permit for it?
Yeah.
And the important question, um, I asked Troy about this morning was, um, that this work be done within, uh, the time allotted with the fiscal year. And so we'll cover the money now. It needs to be spent the first week of August, but he indicated they couldn't get the work done. That's the biggest key. We only have a certain amount of time to do it as we hit July one. Any other discussion? I don't see none. All those in favor? I, our motion carries. Alright, look at us, losing my law. A lot of business done. You can tell it's the end of the year. It's still here, preparing for the new. Alright, that brings us to present to speak. Um, there's anyone in the room? I see a hands up online. Ms. Quinn, I believe that was you. You just identify yourself for the record and limit your comments to two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Can. If you could identify yourself for the record.
Okay. Colleen Quinn.
Thank you.
Uh, mine was more of just a statement because I was listening to the whole thing with the hour change. And just as a person who has raised their kids here. For me, well, for one, it was nice to see everybody in the town, um, work together to get this done or try to get this done. I think the hour changes would be great because more people wouldn't have to take like, to get some of your things done at the town, you would either have to take a half day off or a day off or. So in this new proposal, they would be able to do things before and after. It would have given me enough time to come in to do things like at the end of the day. So it was just more of a statement of how good I think it would be for the town while it does, it, it, it helps the employees too with their work balance home life. It does seem that clearly their proposal came out of caring for the people who they work for so that they can get into the town. So I just wanted to say that as a person that has many times been that person that walked up even though I knew the hours and I went, oh my God, our town office isn't open again. So just, that's all I just wanted to say is I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Mr. Tella.
Hey, Tella, forty-nine girl. I just wanted to throw up about the sand. I was just in some state recordings, I think you and Tammy talked upon it. Uh, where they were seeing the salt is contaminating the wells in, in homes, uh, in Wellington and Tala. So I'm just concerned that we may be going away from sand and going towards, uh, salt when we're harming people's wells. Um. I, I think it's awesome for Dave as a worker because I remember Dave's had four twelves, uh, we're dating twelve, twelve hour weeks. Uh, it's, and it's awesome, but the only concern is having that one day where somebody may need to come in and do their work schedule and now they can't. I think Mike had a, was onto something where maybe they could switch or something, somebody cover, uh, for somebody else. Uh, and maybe rotate that every other week or every week where they can still have that four day work week, but also open five days a week. So.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Ms. Quinn.
Uh, Goodbye Newcomb, uh, twenty-eight Fermier Road. I have two questions and I'll give them to you in writing. Um, in listening to the new explanations, I have a couple of questions. How did a new schedule affect the town office building, meeting schedules for boards and committees? I know that, that there's only so many nights in a week, only so many days in a week, um, and we have a pretty hefty schedule of, um, meetings and committees, uh, boards and committees. And, um, what would the new schedule for the town office building look like on weeks with Monday holidays? Um, if, I think the implication is most people in other towns, I think a lot of them go to Friday off. So would that be a three day week, um, for access to the town office building? Um, and I think that needs to be, um, you know, figured out and anticipated ahead of time.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Ms. Quinn.
Suzanne Chauvin, I'd just like to speak in favor of the scheduled change for the town office building. Um, I think it's a great idea. I've been around the town office building for more years and I care to remember. And one of the biggest complaints, if you will, that we get from the townspeople is that our business hours aren't conducive to business hours. And we really aren't here at times when people most need us to be here. I think we can, we can see how well the model has worked in our surrounding towns. Um, employees are in favor of it, townspeople are in favor of it. Ben's field just went through their trial period and started it. So I just wanted to say in support of it. I think it's a good idea. I recognize that there's wrinkles that will need to be ironed out. As there always is with any, any type of a change, but I think it's something we should really seriously consider. It would have a benefit to the townspeople and the employees all around.
Thank you. Alright, Ms. McKinnon. Should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Melissa McKinnon, sixty-three, Lushawn Road. I just want to speak in favor of the new possible town hours. I think it would be great for not only the staff, but also the townspeople. Um, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, last call. Anyone else present to speak? Twenty-one, going fine. Alright. You know how to reach us if you have something else you want to share. Alright, good and welfare. Uh, Global Food Share will be here at the town office building, uh, tomorrow. When I realize it's Tuesday on Monday. On Wednesday from eleven to eleven thirty, it is open to all, whether you're, uh, Wellington resident or not. Still a drive, a drive through model. Um, as always, continue to support our small businesses and the restaurants if you can. June thirtieth, the tax office will be closed to the public as we prepare, uh, for the upcoming tax season. So I apologize now. That means your tax bills will be coming in the mail. Okay? I'll keep the message in. Uh, concerts in the park were rained out last week. So the, uh, first concert is tomorrow from six thirty to eight thirty at River Road Athletic Complex. Um, Dionne and Finn will be performing and Human Services will be collecting food items for the food pantry. Um, they'll also have a donation bucket if anyone wants to make a donation to the Yule Bank. And you have an opportunity to meet our new Parks and Rec director, um, at tomorrow's concert. I want to, um, a special thank you to the Wellington Garden Club, um, with generous donations from Select Seed out of Union and Night Construction here in Wellington. Um, they've been sharing their time and talent to beautify the gardens around the town office building and the, uh, old town hall. Every year they work tirelessly to plant, water, mulch and maintain, uh, the gardens at no additional cost to taxpayers. So I want to thank them, um, for all they do. So if you come by and you see somebody watering, thank them. They're doing that of their own volunteer time. Summer camp, um, is happening. It's five weeks beginning, uh, the week after the fourth of July. Running into the first full weekend August. There are still some spots open, so anyone interested can contact, um, the Parks and Rec Department. Um, and Jimmy Callahan, our Parks and Rec Director. And again, I want to give a, a big shout out to three staff members. It's not often that I call them individually by name, but Chris Kelly, Nan King and Colleen Peck have really stepped up, um, to make sure that all of our residents still are being serviced within the Parks and Rec and Human Services Department as we transition directors, um, in, in, in those departments. So kudos to all of them. They, um, two of them are very part-time, typically eight and ten hour weekend employees, um, really going above and beyond. Um, which our staff does here on a regular basis. So I want to thank them for all that they do. Other of you have anything for good and more?
Let's just take advantage of that. We got one good day or a couple of good days left before the rain comes in again. Get those, enjoy those free concert.
Yes, concert. And then, uh, Hall's pond passes are available, folks. They are open, um, beginning next weekend, um, in Toggin. So it's a great place to go. It's got some new stands, some new buoys, new rope line, um, and ready to have lots of fun. So. We'll sell lots of grow up swimming there. You can soon. Alright, with that and no other business before us, I will move to adjourn at seven fifty-four.
Second.
Second in. All those in favor?
Sorry.
I.
Alright.
Motion carries.